All right, well, good evening and welcome everyone. The August 5th, 2025 special meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. The time is now 6:02 PM Central Time. And before we call the roll, I will take a couple of moments of personal privilege to welcome our two new board members. First, our student trustee, Azana Brown. I mentioned her during our June meeting, but wanted to welcome her to her first official meeting. She is spending some time this evening with us as she prepares to move back on campus tomorrow. Just so, so happy to have you. She represents the very best and brightest of the campus and we're so glad that she's here. Next is Tish Towns, who was appointed by Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally. As a reminder, the speakers of the House and Senate of the Tennessee General Assembly, appoint two members of each locally governed higher education institution in Tennessee. We are so honored that Lieutenant Governor McNally selected Tish Towns. I know you all are Googling her right now, but I will take a few moments to state that she has extensive history and experience in governance, legislative affairs, and healthcare in the state of Tennessee. She has been a lifelong servant to Tennesseans and a fantastic alum. And I couldn't be more excited to have such a tremendous alumni adjoin the Board of Trustees along with us. And with that, I will go ahead and get us started. We need to make certain findings on the record regarding necessity for conducting today's meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum present. In accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 8-44-108B2, as Chair of the Board of Trustees, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees to conduct this August 5th, 2025 specially called meeting without the physical presence of a quorum. The Board is scheduled to take up important matters which require timely action by the Board, including to approve and take certain actions with respect to academic programs, discuss and take action concerning TSU's administration and the presidential selection process, and to consider the appointment of an individual to serve as TSU's president. Participation by electronic means is necessary due to the travel schedules of the Board members, the importance of the matters to be discussed, and the need to discuss and take action on these matters expeditiously. Is there a motion for the Board to find participation by a quorum of the Board members by electronic means of communication necessary?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The question is on the motion to find that participation by a quorum of the Board members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Secretary Brown, please call the roll.
Trustee Chapman. I'll come back to trustee Chapman, but I do see her present. Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
I'm present.
Trustee Towns?
Present.
Trustee Traubert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
Trustee Bruce?
Present.
And back to trustee Chapman?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you ma'am.
Okay, perfect.
We are all present.
The motion carries. We will proceed with the meeting with a quorum present. Board members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other Board members, please state so. For each Board member participating electronically, if there are any individuals who are present in the location from which you are participating, please identify them. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the administration and the presidential selection process pursuant to Board policy number four. The Board is charged with the authority to appoint the President of the university and must choose a presidential selection process it deems appropriate in the circumstances. In accordance with this Board policy, the selection process should reflect the Board's commitment to and consultation with the campus and community. To this end, the Board has taken several steps to engage the campus and community regarding a university president that will ensure the immediate, short-term, and long-term success of TSU. The Board has interacted and received feedback from internal and external stakeholders, including faculty, staff, students, alumni, business leaders, the Nashville community, and state legislators regarding campus operations, vision, and the office of the president. Last summer, the Board convened a Presidential Search Committee to begin the process of conducting a presidential search. At that time, the committee chair, trustee Qualls, presented the university's statement of qualifications, including that the president would have extensive experience and a record of success leading large, complex organizations undergoing significant change. Number two, demonstrated experience with successful fiscal and financial management and inspire confidence in all stakeholders that the university's future is secure. The ability to work with and influence external stakeholders to build mutually beneficial partnerships and strengthen the university's brand. And finally, number four, the ability to build high-performing teams to strengthen the university's operations and focus on student success. On December 13th, 2024, due to emergent issues, the Board of Trustees appointed Dwayne Tucker as interim president of TSU. Interim President Tucker led the university through a turbulent time with dignity, grace, under fire, and a strong resolve to put students first. He agreed to serve as interim president for six months without compensation, which is a testament to his commitment to the university. Meanwhile, continued efforts were underway with an independent presidential search firm to assess stakeholders on issues pertinent to the presidential position. The search firm, in consultation with various interested parties, established a draft profile for the presidential candidate, which included but was not limited to developing strong relationships with local, state, and national political and business leaders, stabilizing financial practices, increasing undergraduate enrollment and retention while enhancing the student experience, building a high-performing administrative team, and rebuilding the university's image and media relations. The Board paused the presidential search in February. On June 17th, 2025, the university entered into a memorandum of understanding with the state of Tennessee, in which the Board agreed to select a permanent president to lead the university through the deliverables set out in the memorandum of understanding. In addition to those deliverables, the next president will be charged with resolving audit findings, establishing financial stability, increasing overall morale, and developing a comprehensive enrollment strategy. I would emphasize that under state law and Board bylaws, the Board need not conduct further steps in this presidential search process. Rather, the Board is charged with the authority to appoint a president and it must choose a selection process that it deems appropriate in the circumstances. As Board Chair, I am charged with the authority to interpret the terms of Board policy number four. In accordance with these responsibilities and obligations, the Board must now decide on a path forward and select a permanent presidential candidate. Taken into consideration the aforementioned actions and due diligence by this Board, I propose that this Board proceed with selecting the university's next president by a direct and immediate vote on a presidential appointment. However, I will open up the floor for discussion on the method by which this Board should select this presidential candidate.
Chair Winton, I have my hand raised. I don't know if you could see it.
I couldn't see it, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we may have been a little bit premature jumping into the order of business. I don't know that we had a motion and adoption of the agenda. Because I did have and want to raise a motion to add something to the agenda.
Okay, um, would you like to add it now or?
I would, I guess from proper course of action, I don't know. Secretary Brown has a thought on how we proceed since there wasn't a formal adoption of the agenda. If I suggest now go ahead with the motion or, I mean, because I think we are a little premature and jumping into the...
Well, we can just back up then and do a motion to adopt the agenda if you, and then move forward if you have a proposed amendment to it. So Chair Winton, do you want to make a, well, I guess we'll need a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting. May...
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee. Secretary Brown, could you please call the roll?
Yes, trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Wait, wait a second. Was there, was there room for discussion on the agenda? Because I didn't hear, I mean, I know you started with the roll call, but there wasn't a call for discussion on the question.
Well, we did not have one. Would you, so are you proposing that we do a, I guess you're requesting a motion to amend the agenda that's been proposed. So we should do the motion to agenda first. I'm sorry, the motion to amend first, and then we can take up the motion. Thank you. Okay, so trustee Traubert, you're making a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
And what is the, the item you'd like to amend to it?
I move to amend the agenda to add a, a, a item for discussion and possible ratification of any extension to President Tucker's interim contract.
Okay, so motion to add to the agenda, a discussion. Can you repeat the rest of that and ratification?
A discussion and possible ratification of any extension to President Tucker's interim contract. And I would like to make that motion, add that agenda item before we move into the selection process.
Is there a second on trustee Traubert's motion to amend the agenda, to add a discussion and possible ratification of President Tucker's interim president contract before we, the Board moves to the selection process?
Second.
Thank you. Chair, may I call the roll?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls? Trustee Qualls, I couldn't hear you. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you ma'am. Trustee Smith?
Um, yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Traubert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
No.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
Motion passes to amend the agenda to add the additional item. With that, we'll go back to adoption of the agenda with the amendment of adding the discussion and possible ratification of President Tucker's interim president contract before moving on to the presidential selection process. Chair, may I take the roll?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And, and I would say, actually, let me go back and get, can I get a motion on that amended agenda? Trustee Nor... Thank you, Chair, trustee Chapman.
Second.
Second by trustee Traubert, thank you. So now going through the roll call, trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know you're calling the roll. Can you clarify what we're voting on now?
Yes ma'am, we're voting to adopt the agenda as amended with the amendment that was just proposed and passed by, as proposed by trustee Traubert. So it's adding to our agenda for the day a discussion and possible ratification of President Tucker's interim president contract before the Board moves to the selection process. So trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
I'm sorry, I see, well, I thought I saw trustee Towns had her hand up. Maybe she didn't. Okay, sorry.
She's indicating though.
Okay, um. Yes.
Trustee Towns?
No.
Trustee Traubert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
No.
Trustee Young Sigler?
No.
We have six yeses. The motion passes.
Okay, well, the, I mean, I think typically this, any added items will go to the end of the agenda, but due to the conversation at hand, we will proceed with the discussion about the interim process and potential ratification.
Well, as of beginning, Chair Winton, can you let us know what the status is of President Tucker's interim contract and whether it's been extended? And then if it has been extended under what circumstances and authority it was extended?
Sure, on the initial contract that was held by interim president Tucker was to complete the terms of the previous interim president. That term concluded on June 30th, 2025. As a result of that, and under the authority that was granted to the Chair as in the December meeting that I mentioned previously, we extended the contract that President Tucker has, the interim contract. And within those terms, the terms remain the same of what they were back in December when, I'm sorry, excuse me, January, when the contract was originally signed. And then at this point in time, the contract is currently being extended on a month-to-month basis unless either party takes any action to not extend that on a going-forward basis.
And I have my hand raised just for one follow-up. And I understand you're saying the Chair had the authority from the December meeting. But in the contract that you signed under that authority, did the contract state that you and the interim president could extend that contract?
The contract, which I don't have in front of me, and had I known that you were going to bring this up today, then I would have been better prepared to answer your question. Because again, that contract was assigned at the beginning, on July 1st, well, actually around June 30th. And I have slept since then and I cannot answer that question right now. But if you give me a little time, I can pull it up and answer your question. I'm not exactly sure the point that you're trying to get from it, but I'm happy to have a continued conversation about, about this. But if you will help me to understand what you're trying to accomplish, then I will be able to answer your question in a more fruitful way.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, and I think I've seen the contract that said that the Board and President Tucker would extend the contract, not the Chair and President Tucker, which is why I asked for this agenda item to be added for a ratification if the contract had been signed. Because I think the Chair would not have had the authority if you had authority to execute the contract, but then the contract said that it could only be extended between the Board and President Tucker.
But the Chair of the Board has authority to sign on behalf of the Board. And that is the, that is the premise that I was operating under, and that is the premise wherein the contract was signed.
Okay, but if...
We can agree to disagree on, you know, because I'm trying to figure out what you're trying to accomplish with this meeting in a public space today.
No, and I mentioned that, that we need to ratify because it says the Board. It doesn't say the Board Chair and the President could extend it. It says the Board. So, I mean, I move that we ratify the extension of interim President Tucker's contract as signed by Chair Winton.
I think I'm tricking with you now. You're saying that it's the language in the contract that because it says Board and not Chair Winton?
Correct.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure I was tricking as well.
But, so the motion, trustee Traubert, I want to make sure it's correct. Is the, you are moving to ratify an extension of interim President Tucker's employment agreement as executed by, previously by Chair Winton. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
In terms of discussion, I know you're in the middle of your motion. I want to make sure that, like trustee Smith did a few moments ago, I want to make sure I'm understanding that you're wanting to ratify the contract that was signed from, from an interim to extend, right? You're just wanting to change the language to reflect the actions that took place.
Correct. I believe a board action is necessary to ratify what has been done because the Chair did not have authority to sign that contract.
Secretary Brown, I will second this motion for the sake of further discussion.
Chair, may I proceed with the, taking the roll call?
Actually, trustee Towns has her hand up.
I'm sorry, it's for further discussion. I'm just going to leave it up as I'm navigating without a stylus. Uh, let's see. Trustee, I mean, Chair Winton, may I speak?
Yes.
Just, you made a statement a few moments ago that said that the Chair could act on behalf of the Board. I just want to get clarification. If, based on what trustee Traubert is saying, based on our bylaws and based on the contract, I'm not sure that I would agree that the Chair has the authority to sign anything on behalf of the Board without being delegated authority. I just wanted to make that clarification. I mean, if that's what you meant, that at any time you could sign anything on behalf of the Board without delegation, then I don't think that's correct.
You are absolutely correct. No, what I was saying was, under the delegated authority that was given to the Chair back in December, that was the impetus for the extension of the contract.
And I don't want us to get caught in the weeds, and I know we have a motion that is actually on the floor now. And I think it's just to actually ratify the language because of the action that was taken, which I don't believe is an issue. It's just to fix the language in the contract so that it shows where Chair Winton signed, but it was not on behalf of the Board. And that's me making sure that I'm summarizing correctly what I'm hearing from trustee Traubert.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm, what I'm proposing in my motion is to ratify what Chair Winton has already done in signing the contract. Because I believe a board action should have been taken to extend that contract. So for purposes of the public and for purposes of our bylaws and policies, I believe we need to ratify that action. And that's why I made a motion, it was seconded, and then would be up for vote to ratify the action that has already been taken.
If I might just ask a question, I, my apologies as a new person, but the ratification motion, is this to ratify the interim contract to be executed on a month-to-month basis or some other period?
Well, from my understanding, based on Chair Winton's response, the contract she executed was on a month-to-month basis. So again, I would be proposing that we are simply ratifying what she executed. I don't know if we need additional terms of what we're ratifying, but I understood her to say it's a month-to-month contract, so we would be ratifying the contract on a month-to-month basis.
On a month-to-month, okay, retrospectively. And then my second question is really related to governance and governance documents. Our governance documents speak to who is authorized to execute agreements on behalf of the Board. Is that not correct? We don't all sign, do we?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, and this is, I think, going back to the question that trustee Qualls asked, that no, we don't all sign, but what we normally do, trustee Towns, is go through the delegation of authority. And that is what gives the Chair the authority to sign. And I, I'm just, again, working to make sure I'm putting the pieces together too. That is the interpretation of the bylaw.
Correct, that is one person's interpretation. And it's fine. I, in the interest of time today, we've spent 30 minutes on so far, and we haven't, we do have a pretty extensive meeting tonight, so I want to be conscious of time. So if there's not any other comments or statements that need to be made on this motion, there's a motion on the table.
Yes, I have one other clarification.
Sure.
This contract is the, it's exact same, or was there any other compensation added to this contract with the month-to-month?
So as you are aware, because the contract was sent to the entire Board immediately after it was signed, yes, there was compensation added to the contract.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
May I proceed with the roll call, Chair?
Please.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
No.
Trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Towns?
No.
Trustee Traubert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
No.
Trustee Young Sigler?
No.
It was four yeses, five noes, the motion fails.
Thank you. Moving back to the regular scheduled agenda, I believe there was a motion on the table in terms of, the question was to discuss the vote to select the next TSU's president. And then I believe there was a motion and a second there, and the question was on the motion to directly and immediately vote to select the next TSU president. But we were supposed to have some discussion.
Chair, we have not had a motion or second yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. But as of right now, we are opening up the floor for a discussion on the method by which this Board should take, should select this presidential candidate.
Um, I'm raising my hand. Oops.
Trustee Qualls, is it you?
It is me.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Winton. As, as you mentioned in the Chair... Uh, thank you, Chair Winton. As as you mentioned in the chair of the presidential ad hoc Presidential Search Committee, working with the search firm developing or trying to develop a draft of the qualifications and the presidential profile. Um, I just want to make sure that we're clear how we're moving forward with this in a process. Because when you ended the search, that in essence ended all of the other information that we had collected. And when we did the profile and working with the search firm at that time, it was asking questions for the state in which we were then. So as we move forward, are you suggesting that we use that old profile and prospectus and profile for the president? Or do we need to, given the circumstances now, look at creating a new profile and process? In qualifications, not process, qualifications and profile for a president moving forward?
I I think we 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 kind of with the memorandum of understanding and as well as with even some of the terms of what the search firm outlined back in January, as well as the information that we looked at back in June of last year, all most of that information still still remains the same. The university is still in a very critical position in terms of finances, in terms of enrollment, in terms of our strategy as we attempt to move forward. So there's still a lot of things that, as I mentioned before, are still on the table for us and the challenges that we have to meet to overcome. So I don't think it's necessary to start a new necessarily selection process because a lot of those challenges that we had a year ago are still we're still facing today. Trustee Trowbert.
I just wanted to understand a few points of clarification, so I'm I'm clear. Um, so I have three points, and I'll finish all three, and then you can respond or others can discuss. So one, you mentioned the MOU states that we must name a new president. Based on my review of the MOU, I didn't understand it to say that. I thought for the MOU to end, it was either on a date that would be certain after a last payment was made or the earlier of naming a president and other factors. So there's nothing in the MOU that specifically states we must name a president. And even with those other factors, some of those factors seem to be remote possibilities such that naming a a permanent president is not a requirement under the MOU. Also, I wanted to clarify, you mentioned that the board ended the search, and I believe you're referring to the March meeting. If my recollection is correct, I don't believe the board took any action to end the search. Chair Winton, I believe you said the search was being put on pause. And I don't know if there was a Presidential Search Committee meeting that came to that conclusion that would then lead to a motion for the board to adopt. But based on my recollection, I don't believe the board took a vote to pause the search. And then I think you also mentioned a survey when you were talking about the selection process and then our policies. And just want to clarify that I don't recall a board action being taken to issue that survey and then under what authority or I guess purview from your perspective was the survey issue. So I know that's loaded, and those are three different issues, but if you could respond to to those three.
Sure. On the memorandum of understanding, the first thing you mentioned was the presidential, the the terms in terms of naming a president. So when the legislation was passed by the Tennessee General Assembly, they specifically outlined that they would like to name they they in order for the state of Tennessee to provide some much-needed funds to the Tennessee State University. The memorandum of understanding was a mechanism by which that the Tennessee State University, as well as the state of Tennessee, could collaborate together to try and establish some terms and conditions to receive additional funding. I will note that this is not a new issue in terms of the Tennessee General Assembly. They have there are people who have been working tirelessly in the background to try to ensure that Tennessee State University gets in a better financially solvent position. As you are aware, when we started back in July of twenty twenty-four, we learned as a board collectively that we were sixty million dollars in a deficit. And so we needed to take some action in order to do that, which is why a new interim president was named, and then we still experienced challenges in terms of our collaboration with the state of Tennessee. And then after that, they the Tennessee General Assembly proposed legislation by which this memorandum of understanding was developed. In subsequent conversations with the state of Tennessee, as with Tennessee State University, I was not privy to those meetings, and I was not in those meetings. However, it was made very abundantly clear to me based upon conversations that I had with various people who were involved in that meeting that one of the conditions that they outlined was to name a president. And so that is what I spoke to earlier. Your second statement in regards to pausing the search. There was not any official board action taken. However, there was also not any statements made in any of the board meetings in March, in April, in May, in June, or in this month, in the month of July, or in August until today, wherein there was an issue with the pausing of the presidential search. As a matter of fact, anyone at any point in time could have taken any action to try to get to if there was some fervor to create or to do some additional action or activity, then that could have been done, but it has not been. And then finally, in regards to the survey, I actually did not mention the survey in my comments, so I there there I don't feel the need to respond to that question.
Okay, just one uh one follow-up or maybe two follows on the on the MOU, I just want clarification. Are you saying that the agreement requires naming a president, or that's just based on your conversations and understanding? Because again, my my read of the agreement is not that it requires naming a president.
So are you reviewing section four point one? Memorandum of understanding?
I don't I don't have it in front of me, kind of similar to the interim contract. I don't have it in front of me.
But you brought it up, so just wanted to make sure that if you're going to bring it up, section four point one outlines the need to appoint a long-term president on this.
And what and what context? If you have it up, can you read it for us?
No, I do not have it up.
So I guess I'm misunderstanding if you said you had it up or you were looking at it, or you know what it says. Again, when I looked at it and read it, it did not say that, that a president was required. And I just wanted to make that clarification, too. Again, just a prior point on the the board ending the search. And everything you said, fair points taken, but just in your comments in this meeting, you said the board took action to pause the search, and I just wanted to make sure we were all under the same understanding that we did not take any action to pause the search. From my recollection of the meeting, the chair paused the search without a board vote.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other comments? On the matter at hand?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure that we're level stating that if there is a question of the MOU as it relates to does it firmly say that we need to name a president? Um, Jeanette, are you able to pull that section for us and share it?
Yes, ma'am, let me.
Please note that everyone on this board has a copy of the memorandum of understanding. And so at any point in time, if anybody has any additional questions, they can please be sure to add your additional commentary. It is also important to note that we have received information from the state of Tennessee advising of their intentions for us to name a president. I, again, I want to ensure that because what it appears that the attempt here is to try to uh, set some type of statements that there's some malfeasance or some state statements or thoughts that the board chair is acting without anyone uh, being aware of any activity and I professionally, I think it's completely inappropriate and unnecessary, but nevertheless, the goal for today is for for us as a board to take the action that is on the record. So if there's not anything else related to the process of the presidential search, we do not need to have any other comments.
Yes, I do.
May I? Sorry, am I supposed to share this screen or no?
Well, I mean, I'm asking because it seems like there was a question about a certain section in the MOU, and if that is needed to bring clarity, that's my only request. If there is some question around if the MOU specifically states that a president has to be named, just so that we're on all on the same page.
Okay, I I have it pulled up and I can share it. Can you see this section right here? I'm hoping you can see it.
Yes.
Okay, so can you see section four point one?
Yeah. So the they agreed the MOU states the expectations for terminating this agreement are that if or are that a long-term TSU president is named.
But I just want to point out, I read it to say it will terminate on July one or when the expectations are met. So even if the expectations aren't met, it would still terminate on July one.
I guess my question is that understanding that this will terminate on July. It's I want to make sure I'm tracking with you again. Are you saying that because the expectations for terminating this agreement is not I just want to follow.
I I read it to say it's the earlier of July one or when the expectations are met. So even if the expect if July one twenty twenty-nine occurs and those expectations aren't met, the MOU would terminate. Or if we meet those three expectations before July one twenty twenty-nine, then the agreement can terminate. But Secretary Brown, please, you know, jump in if you think I'm interpreting that wrong.
I mean, it says that the MOU will terminate the earlier, whichever occurs earlier, July first twenty twenty-nine, or when the expectations are met and the expectations are set out in one, two, and three that followed.
So is it safe to say the interpretation of this is if we do not name a president, the MOU can be terminated?
The MOU will be terminated on July first twenty twenty-nine.
Or when the expectations are not met.
Or when the expectations are met.
Are met.
I think just for clarity, July one twenty twenty-nine would be after the series of payments had already been made. So it's just about after that, how long we would be under the terms of the agreement. And the other terms of the agreement excluding the payment would mean that we would be bound to them until the earlier of July one twenty twenty-nine, or when those three expectations are met. And I just wanted to just clarify the point that I did not interpret this agreement to say that we had to name a permanent president to receive the terms and payments under the agreement.
Trustee Smith?
Um, I would like to make to make a motion to proceed to vote on the process to select the next president. I I did have my hand up for a while, maybe even before you came in with the motion. So if possible, I would like to be recognized for my comment.
Sure, trustee calls.
So going back to the the comments or statements that you were making about what we did to get feedback. Just wanting to make sure I, like I'm sure several of you all, have received emails, texts, phone calls about I didn't get an opportunity to participate in something, or I don't think my voice was heard. I'm not sure that we were as deliberate as we could have been in engaging the faculty, staff, students, and alumni with their voice in this process. And so with that, how do you respond to the alumni, to the students, faculty, and staff who did not have an opportunity to provide feedback in this process that you have outlined?
Thank you.
And I'm saying that on from the formal, I mean, I guess the ad hoc committee is still hasn't officially been dissolved, but I do take this seriously that we are going to have a fair and equitable process where people's voices are heard, particularly in this instance of higher education in shared governance.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments. We have received numerous letters from various entities advising of their support of this process and their support of naming interim President Tucker as the permanent president. So thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions?
Wait, no, 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 no. Have you heard? So that's only.
I received one email. Actually, I received two emails and that were not in support of this process, and then I received ten emails that were in support. So I I I believe that we have done everything that is pertinent and necessary, and if you don't, you obviously are allowed to vote according to to whatever that you feel appropriate. Are there any other questions or comments?
For the record, I will say for the record, I will say that the survey that was submitted was not approved by the board, and it did not go out to all of our alumni. It did not go out to all of our alumni, faculty, staff, students, and stakeholders to participate.
Again, I surveyed today. I never mentioned the survey today, which is not the rationale that I provided in support of the motion that I've already made, but thank you for your comments.
Chair Winton, to to is the I'm sorry, I want to clarify, are we on to the motion to proceed to the vote? Or are we on a motion to are we on a motion to proceed to?
We are on trustee Smith's motion to proceed to the vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, so motion was made by trustee Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you reread the the motion, just just so we all understand what we're going on?
Question is on the motion to proceed to a to vote on the presidential selection process. Trustee Chapman?
Yeah.
Trustee Northley?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Trowbert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Having thoroughly considered this matter, is there a motion? Well, I'm sorry. Actually, the question is on the motion to proceed directly and immediately to vote to select the next TSU president.
So we need the motion in a second.
Point of order. I think that's not what's on the agenda.
What's not what's on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda reads selection of a candidate.
Right, but before we can actually select the candidate, we need to vote and select the actual candidate. So we haven't um, actually voted to select the president.
The the action was on the presidential selection process. So the motion that Chair Winton has asked for is for the board to proceed. So the motion that Chair Winton has asked for is for the board to proceed with a direct vote to select the next TSU president.
I guess procedurally, the next thing would be just the nomination of who that would be if we're going to go directly to a vote.
But we have, um, the board hasn't acted on identifying the direct voting as your preferred means of selection, of the presidential selection process.
The preferred method is an immediate vote to select them.
Yes, so I think that the board chair has asked for is a vote, um, a motion for the board to proceed directly to vote to select the next TSU president. And that would be the board's, um, intended selection process for this presidential candidate.
So moved?
Thank you.
There's, there's a second, was that you, Chair?
That is.
Okay, trustee Chapman?
I'm not clear on this motion.
That I'm with you. We are now voting for a process to select the president, right?
No, the first vote was that would we do, we will outline a process. This vote is that the process will be to name a president directly. And then we will, the next vote and the next item on the agenda will be the discussion of naming president, interim president Tucker as the direct president. So we've got two more steps to get through.
So the motion.
One of order that those things are not on the agenda.
Trustee Qualls, that's not my interpretation of the agenda, but I don't know if that's directed at me or, or Chair Winton, but. Chair Winton, shall I proceed with the vote?
Please proceed.
Uh, trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Northfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Pass.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Trower?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
And trustee Qualls, were you passing or abstaining?
I am F's. What, wait, tell me what the, um, motion was again, please. Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to take action on the presidential selection process and to proceed directly and immediately to vote to select the next TSU president.
No.
Thank you. Next. Authority, okay, the motion, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we will proceed with the nomination and appointment of permanent president for TSU. As chair of the board and pursuant to the board's bylaws, I am nominating and recommending the appointment of Dwayne Tucker to serve as president of TSU. As I noted previously, and with the discussion of the board, Dwayne is an esteemed and distinguished alumnus of TSU. He has consistently demonstrated his unwavering, unwavering commitment to the university through his service on the foundation as a trustee and now as interim president. Mr. Tucker, as mentioned before, brings to the role a wealth of leadership experience, including his, including his tenure as CEO of Lee Public Schools and executive roles in major corporations such as First Data, Northwest, well, Northwest Airlines Alliance Data, where he held areas, he, where, excuse me, where he led in areas of operations, human resources, and finance. I cannot underscore enough that Mr. Tucker assumed the interim presidency during a time of significant transition and a myriad of challenges, and has already begun to restore confidence, transparency, and unity within and outside of the TSU community. His continued commitment to serve reflects a deep and selfless dedication to the university's mission and its students. Faculty, students, and alum have expressed their strong support for Mr. Tucker's leadership, citing his integrity, institutional knowledge, and ability to stabilize and advance the university. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry, who was the second?
Me.
Trustee Smith, okay, thank you.
Well, I move to, so do we need to take the roll here?
No, I have a comment.
Sure.
So first and foremost, I am very appreciative of Mr. Dwayne Tucker and all that he has done in this interim period. This vote, as it comes up, is by no means a vote against or for a person. It is about a process and being fair in a process for the university in selecting a president of the university. So I just want to state for the record, this is not a, a, a vote of extension or against a person, but against a process. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Brown. Is, are there any other comments? Secretary Brown, please call the roll.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Northfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Next name.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Trower?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, well, congratulations, President Tucker. I believe he's on the phone, but I won't, uh, call you out. So congratulations and thank you for your continued support uh, to the Board of Trustees, to the students, and to the entire TSU community. And we are looking forward to continuing to work with you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of board delegation of authority to the board chair to execute agreements governing the appointment and employment of the president. In retaining to, in retaining to Mr. Tucker to service president, the board will need to execute one or more agreements to facilitate Mr. Tucker's hirings. These agreements will reflect the common terms and provisions governing the hiring of a university president, including term of the agreement, salary, and other terms and conditions of employment. Is there a motion to approve the board's delegation of authority to the board chair in consultation with the executive committee to execute necessary agreements governing the employment of Mr. Tucker to serve as president?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'm sorry.
I, I do have, uh, discussion on the, the motion on the floor. So you, you said delegating authority to the chair to execute the agreement with consultation with the executive committee? Can you describe to us what consultation you envision having with the executive committee?
Well, quite frankly, it will consist of any agreement that comes before the board chair and before I sign anything for everyone to have sign on that is a member of the executive committee. And then that information to be shared with the remainder of the board, as we have done with all the other agreements.
Well, and, and I don't recall that it's been done with all the other agreements immediately after they've been executed. But you have not consulted with the executive committee before on execution of presidential contracts, correct, or the interim presidential contract?
Motion on the table right now, we could, you can continue to go back and forth into the past, I'm not interested in that. So if you would like to have, have a comment after, on this particular motion, then I'm happy to hear it. Otherwise, if you don't want it to have consultation with the executive committee, I'm happy to just consult with the entire board.
That, that was, that was a question, that was a question on this motion, but we can move on.
And also, just for clarity, the consultation would include the, um, working together to complete the contract, the terms and conditions.
Correct.
And I will add that because of the expertise of members of the board pertaining to, um, presidential employment, I would also suggest that it is inclusive of the entire board, um, as we prepare the employment agreement. And I don't know how we would need to go about doing that, um, Secretary Brown. Um, but there is a level of expertise in the room around presidential appointment and agreement, uh, employment agreement. Um, so it is my suggestion that, um, while we're congratulating President Tucker, before we go into the actual employment agreement, that we bring that expertise into the conversation.
And I, I'll make an amendment on, well, I'm sorry. Trustee Young Sigler had her hand up. Apologies.
It's okay. Thank you. Um, I was just going to say something similar to, um, what trustee Chapman just, uh, stated in that I think in consultation with the executive committee, uh, uh, excludes the entire board from having comments sometimes. And I know, um, it really doesn't because we're in the conversation, but I think sometimes the rest of the board members who are not a part of the executive committee can sometimes feel excluded from the process. So if we could sort of amend this to include the board rather than just the executive committee, that I would, uh, I would support that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is the entire board would like to negotiate an employment agreement with the president.
Not necessarily negotiate, but to provide insight and an opinion, not necessarily to negotiate.
This is to the contract itself, correct, Dr. Young Sigler? So I don't want to put words in your mouth. I want to make sure I hear, understand what you're saying.
Yes, just to provide comments and context before the, um, contract is executed. Just like if you would do to the executive committee, just provide context before it's executed.
Sure thing. Trustee Towns?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think trustee Trower had a question before I, uh, ask a clarifying question, so I would like to yield to him, please.
Well, I was going to propose an amendment, something similar to what trustee Young Sigler, uh, said. But I can cede my, my time and amendment to you, trustee Towns.
Thank you so very much. So, um, I, again, as a new member, appreciate the conversation and the opportunity to be involved. Um, from a governance standpoint and an employment standpoint, I would like to make a friendly suggestion to the conversation that has been held. And that is, we trust our chair in consultation with the executive committee to negotiate the overall terms of the employment agreement and bring it back here for ratification. I find it in my experience in employment contracts and other matters to negotiate with a full body of ten plus people to be very difficult. So I would propose that the ratification of the final appointment agreement come back to this body. And then that place, you can make any comments or recommendations for changes. And also from a timing and efficiency standpoint, just coordinating schedules.
Thank you, trustee Towns.
To double down on what trustee Towns is suggesting, it's really a conversation about may perhaps, what is it that individuals are wanting to see in this contract? And sharing that with the chair so that a final document can be created before it's executed. Is, and, and I don't want to overinterpret what folks are saying. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Is that we're wanting to make sure that we understand or have input to what is in the contract? Not necessarily that the entire board is sitting at the table having the discussion with President Tucker, but that the board is able to offer input through Secretary Brown to what you would like to see in the contract before it is negotiated.
I, I'm not. I, I've, I've made my proposal, so I, I'm just going to yield my time to have someone else make the amendment so that we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Trustee Smith Knight had her hand, uh, first.
Trustee Smith Knight, I can't even see you, but you are recognized.
Yes, thank you. I think if I can be, um, helpful, I'm gonna try to be helpful. What I believe would help us, and I don't know why we don't have this set up on this board already, but, um, typically there's a, a personnel committee that helps in matters such as this. And we don't have that. Would it be helpful to identify a couple of board trustees who would like to serve in the ad hoc capacity to help move this process much faster? Um, and utilizing some of the skills that we have, um, outside of these, in addition to the executive board? Is that, would that help address some of the need? That's a question.
Sounds like an elephant in a room, and y'all know I call stuff out. Um, there is a need to want to share more around what the actual appointment agreement is, what it looks like, what's in it. I think those that have the expertise in that space could participate in an ad hoc committee. Um, and that way to, um, trustee Towns' point, it's not going to everybody, but those that have the expertise in that space to finalize what that agreement is. Um, and I believe our bylaws, trustee Winton, allows you to, uh, create an ad hoc committee.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, just, like I said, in the interest of time, I want to make sure that we, that the academic program information is critically important. Um, so what I, instead of delegating authority right now, what we will do is reconvene the board. Um, and if there's any information that anyone has they want to share with me in terms of what they'd like to see in the agreement, we can go ahead and get that started. And then, um, of course, President Tucker, I'm sure will have some things that he would like to add to that agreement. So we will table the motion to delegate the authority for now. Moving on to the next.
Madam Chair, I just ask, and I'm sorry to prolong this, but is there not a standard employment contract that exists, uh, with the university or the board of regions that as a starting point?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, of course. Thank you. Okay.
Chair Winton, I'm sorry, not to delay this any further. What is the, I guess, the effect of delaying the delegation of authority? Because we can't enter into a contract at this point. So if we delay this, what's that impact?
So what, what, what I'd like to be able to do is get some pen to paper to get some ideas in front of the full board to ensure that everyone feels like they are a part of the process. Get those standard terms out to everyone. And then at that point in time, we would have to call another public meeting so that we can discuss the delegation, so that we can get the final contract, hopefully as close as we can get to terms resolved and ensure that everybody's involved in the process.
Thank you.
Of course. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of ac- academic program modifications. And I would like to invite trustee Northfleet, the chair of the Student Academic Affairs Committee, to present information for this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening to everyone. On July first, twenty twenty five, the Student and Academic Affairs Committee had a chance to consider the approval of certain academic actions, including actions concerning low-producing programs and academic program modifications. Um, the committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the academic actions for academic programs and academic units is outlined in Table One in the materials that you have today. Um, the meeting and to authorize the proper officers of the university to take other actions as may be necessary and deemed appropriate, and work with the Tennessee Education Commission, as well as the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools to implement the academic actions for academic programs and academic units. I move for the full board to approve the academic actions for academic programs and academic units is outlined in Table One in today's board materials. As part of this motion, I move that the proper officers of the university are authorized to take other actions as may be necessary and deemed appropriate, and work with the Tennessee Education Commission and the Southern Association of Colleges and schools to implement these academic actions for academic programs and academic units. Is there a second?
Second.
But before we do that, um, I thought that I had withdrawn my previous motion in regards to, um, the, the delegation of authority. But if I didn't do that, then I, I don't know if we need to do anything else, Secretary Brown, in regards to that.
I don't even think we had a second on that motion.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So moving back to the motion that is on hand, there's a motion and a second.
Uh, uh, we have a motion, we have not, um, I'm sorry, who was the second? Was that?
Second.
Okay. Um, Chair, uh, trustee Chapman?
No, there's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Chair Northfleet, Chair Winton, just to be clear on these items. Um, and I will restate this, um, I stated it when we were, when, when you had your academic affairs meeting in on June. All of these programs and changes are grouped together, and I just want to be clear that if a vote, if I don't agree with one of them in here, and I'm particularly talking about the, um, the School of Business condensing the programs from four departments to three because of an active dean search going on, and I thought that that would be something that the dean, the next dean should be a part of that discussion before making that permanent suggestion. So the question is if a vote for yes means approving all of them, but if you don't agree with one thing in the, the list, then you should vote no. Is that correct?
So as the Chair of this committee, I'm recommending that we vote them. Oh, I cannot, I don't think tell you what to vote, let me say that, but if you're voting collectively, then we're voting on all of these actions together. I would also just like to share that, um, when it comes to the operations of academic affairs and units, so I understand and hear the call about the deans and the interim roles, but we should also be reminded that several iterations of faculty meetings, academic council, of these other chair meetings are held, um, prior to just a dean plus something for it as well. So other faculty members have had the opportunity to share, um, and um, trustee Young Sigler may can chime in as the faculty representative as well. But I would also say that all of them may not have agreed, but if it made it to this point, then it came out of their departmental committees as well. Just from my understanding of academic affairs. Somebody else may want to chime in at this time.
Yes, and I'm gonna allow, um, if I could provoke Melton to speak to that as far as faculty input on this process.
Good afternoon. Um, this is Robbie Melton. Um, and again, let me first welcome our student trustee, um, trustee Bruce and our new trustee Town. On behalf of academic affairs in terms of procedures, these recommendations come from the faculty through various committee. We have departmental committee, we have the college, all the way up to our academic affairs. Please know that according to SAC COC, and I have Dr. Anderson standing by also, all curriculum items are with the faculty. So yes, we do have a dean search, but these recommendations are brought forth from that college. And again, as trustee Northley indicated, not everybody at any time will agree, but we have documentation of these recommendations coming to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I believe, well, whoever else wants to speak. Attorney Brown?
Yes, may I proceed with the roll call vote, vote? Chair Winton?
Yes.
Please.
Trustee Chapman?
It's your call.
Yeah.
Trustee Chapman, that was a yes? Okay, thank you. CS, trustee Northfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls? Trustee Qualls, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Thank you.
But I did not hear, uh, hear what your vote was.
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Trowbert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight?
No.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
The yeses have it, the motion passes.
Okay. I do not believe there's any additional business, so at that point in time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Removed.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Secretary Brown, please call the roll.
Trustee Chapman?
Good night, y'all.
Trustee Northfleet? Take that as a yes. Trustee Northfleet? Trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Trowbert?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight? Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes, yes.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And we are adjourned. The time is now eight twenty. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Seven twenty Central. Thank you.